All right, good evening, everyone. Board of Selectmen, regular meeting, December 14th. I can't believe we're already this late in the year. We'll begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Okay, we will begin with public audience, and there is one email that was submitted. This is from Joan Coe. At the November 23rd, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting, Town Manager Maria Capriola stated that she will no longer allow picture attachments included in comments shown during public audience. Shame on the Board of Selectmen, allowing Town Manager Maria Capriola to erode the constitutional First Amendment rights to have all pictures excluded when attached to the comments to be shown at the Board of Selectmen meetings. Comments can be read aloud, but when you challenge the Town Manager Maria Capriola's narrative with pictures, people's First Amendment rights are violated. All elected officials are sworn to uphold the Constitution and First Amendment rights of everyone. Why can the Town Manager impose her bizarre restrictions at Board of Selectmen meetings? The Board of Selectmen has given Town Manager Maria Capriola a four-year contract with a salary, benefits, and perks of about $200,000 a year. With the security of a four-year contract and a Board of Selectmen more interested in getting re-elected than protecting the constitutional rights of the public, Town Manager Maria Capriola can impose her dictatorial powers on others. None of these members deserve to be re-elected. Town Manager Maria Capriola stated that Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo gave her guidance to impose these restrictions with his opinion. However, the Town Attorney has not confirmed that he gave Town Manager Maria Capriola cover to not allow these pictures to be shown as submitted. Did Town Manager Maria Capriola lie when getting cover for her abusive behavior? At the November 19th, 2020 meeting of Public Safety and the November 23rd, 2020 meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Deputy First Selectman Sean Askin and Chairman of the Public Safety Subcommittee became unhinged when discussing a rumor that a family had a party with over 40 students where several people had tested positive for COVID-19. As a result of the family's insensitivity to the transmission of the virus, the high school had to have two days of distance learning and a restaurant had to close due to students quarantined and not able to work. Although this behavior is inexcusable, the Police Department was not called to the house, and therefore, the Police Department was not involved. However, both Sean Askin and Town Manager Maria Capriola wanted to use the full arm of the government to discipline the family. On November 30th, 2020, the Board of Finance had a tri-board meeting to discuss the formulation of the 2021 budget and the need to reduce spending in an uncertain future. During the discussion, when the Board of Finance recommended reduced budgets, Deputy First Selectman challenged the direction of the Board of Finance by suggesting lowering spending. Nobody cares that Sean Askin has formulated budgets for a decade, nor do they care how much time he allocates to formulating spending budgets. The task at hand is to develop a budget that has a 1.5% increase or less in spending. Just do it. I would like to suggest that the town assume their fiduciary responsibilities and provide leases to low and very low-income families as directed in the land lease of the Eno Farms Affordable Housing. Eno Farms Affordable Housing alleged fraudulent operation should be corrected before the town adds more affordable housing to the community. There are boxes in Town Hall of files of lawsuits, correspondence, and minutes from the Housing Partnership that monitored the housing during the Mary Glassman tenure at Town Hall that should be reviewed. Senator Richard Blumenthal was the Attorney General overseeing the Charities Division in charge of the Eno Farms Affordable Housing. There's been much discussion about the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund that had a loss every year with taxpayers closing the deficit with numbers in the thousands year after year. The original Oracle Farms, now called Simsbury Farms, was purchased December 8th, 1968 for $800,000, and construction costs were $1,777,860. The official opening was August 1971. There was much discussion on adding a golf course that was promoted by them, First Selectman Rush Shaw, since he played golf. The model that was presented to the taxpayers at the time and voted on was for the golf course's additional revenues to be used to reduce payments for some of the youth activities, and all adult recreation was pay-to-play. The model is morphed into a broken system where the taxpayers are paying for many of the activities, and the golf course was separated from the model. Where's the model for pay-to-play? Why can't there be seasonal employees to contract to manage activities to reduce overhead expenses? And why can't the golf course be managed by a golf management business, as other towns have done with reduced costs? The golf course has become the sacred cow and protected by special interest groups, leaving the taxpayers to foot the bill. It should not continue. All my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter @JoanCoe, and Facebook. Reminder to anyone who wants to participate in public audience, you can do so in person by joining our meetings. We ask that you email Tom Fitzgerald ahead of time to register. His email is tfitzgerald@simsbury-ct.gov. If you want to send us an email, you can send that to Erica Butler, our Town Clerk, We have a couple of, actually, three presentations. The first is a proclamation that we wanted to give to Ed Cosgrove for his many, many, many years of service to the Police Commission and many other volunteer boards and commissions in town. He's going to be stepping down from the Police Commission shortly after about 28 years of service. He's been a strong advocate for our Police Department and will no doubt leave a lasting impact on our town. Melissa, would it be possible to screen share the proclamation? Great. And it reads, whereas Ed Cosgrove served 28 years on the Police Commission, eight years on the Public Building Committee, eight years on the Culture Parks and Rec Commission, eight years on the Zoning Commission, and eight years on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And whereas Mr. Cosgrove was involved in many projects around Simsbury, including the conversion of the Beldon School into today's Town Hall, Police Department, and the Board of Education offices. And whereas Mr. Cosgrove, during his tenure on the Police Commission, played an important role in selecting two chiefs of police for the Simsbury Police Department. And whereas Mr. Cosgrove was a champion of a more diverse Simsbury Police Department. And whereas Mr. Cosgrove's dedication to public service in Simsbury is exemplary. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Simsbury recognizes all of the work Mr. Ed Cosgrove has done for Simsbury over the years and wish to express our utmost gratitude to him for working to make Simsbury a better place for all. I wanted to see if there is a motion for the Board to endorse this proclamation.
I'd like to move that.
I'll second.
Sean moved, Jackie seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I wanted to open it up to members of this Board, or members of the Police Commission who are with us, and see if there are any thoughts or reflections that folks wanted to share.
Eric, if you don't mind, if I could go first.
Please, Sean.
I've known Ned, feels like I believed my entire life. I believe Ned, you served with my mom on the zoning commission back when I was much younger. And much like so many in this community, I grew up watching your service and a real inspiration to me. Really, I can't believe, if you add up all the time, it's more years than I've been on this earth that you've given to this community, and I really appreciate that. I know you've made a substantial difference, again, with the Police Commission. You know, 28 years ago, it was somewhat of a contentious issue. We didn't have a Police Commission. You know, this town put it in place, and I know you've been through it all, and I believe your family has a history of policing as well. So Ned, thank you so much for all your service to this community.
Thanks, Sean. Are there other reflections others would like to share?
This is Terry Fogerty from the Police Commission. I'd just like to say cheers to Ned with all of his hard work through the years. Good luck for a long life, sir.
Thanks, Terry. All right, wonderful, thank you. And thank you to the members of the Police Commission who could be with us tonight. Another proclamation that we have tonight is to recognize Ed Lamontaine. I want to confirm, Ed is with us. I'm not seeing everyone's pictures, but can someone give me a thumbs up if Ed is here? Okay, excellent. All right, let me read this and then open up the floor. So Ed is going to be, or he has stepped down from Aging and Disability after serving 26 years. He has served as the Chairman of Aging and Disability for nearly a dozen years, and his service to the Simsbury community, especially his advocacy for seniors and persons with disabilities, is just exemplary. Whereas Ed Lamontaine served 26 years on the Aging and Disability Commission, with 12 years as Commission Chair. And whereas Mr. Lamontaine advocated for the senior community members and community members with disabilities. And whereas Mr. Lamontaine created the town's Handicap Parking Awareness Campaign that is held every June. And whereas Mr. Lamontaine was always an enthusiastic participant in events for seniors and those with disabilities, including but not limited to picnics in the park, Sensory Santa events, senior fashion show, and the Super Tuesday Lunch Program. And whereas Mr. Lamontaine continues his efforts assisting the community with his work at the Simsbury Housing Authority. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Simsbury, recognizing all of the work Mr. Ed Lamontaine has done for Simsbury over the years, and wish to express our utmost gratitude to him for making Simsbury a better place for all. Is there a motion to endorse this proclamation?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Wendy.
I'll second with our thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What reflections do any members of the Board want to share about Ed?
I'd like to just make a couple comments as the liaison to Aging and Disability.
Okay.
I've only gotten to work with Ed for a year, but I immediately noticed that he's very, he was very task-driven and required everybody to participate, and he always worked with the team with heart and enthusiasm in everything that he did. And it was just a pleasure to work with him, and I look forward to working with Diane and Shannon.
Thanks, Wendy.
Eric, this is Mike Payne.
Eric.
Let's go with Mike and then you, Chris.
So I met Ed a number of years ago, and he's just been very low-key, but very subtle in, oh, just give me a hand doing this, and kind of draws you in, but did some absolutely wonderful things for the town and all the citizens, very inclusively in the town. And Ed, you made us a better town, so thank you very much, and thanks for having some fun.
Thanks, Mike. Chris?
You know, I became aware of Ed's work and really, frankly, the broader parts of the organization that he's involved with, you know, when I started participating on the Board and stuff. And I don't really know Ed personally all that well, but certainly have been an appreciative admirer from afar. I just think, you know, I think many of you folks, my teammates here, have heard me speak about the level of volunteerism that occurs in this town, and most of it, you know, 99% of it goes quietly and unsung. And when you read the engagement here and the level of participation and contribution that is attached to Ed, it's just, it's phenomenal. But the shame of it is, and thankfully to this event tonight, that I would say that the majority of the town doesn't know that such an individual exists, but so many individuals like Ed exist in our town, but it's just a really, it's quite emotional, and just, it's warming to know what he has done for us, and I'm just incredibly appreciative because we don't think about some of these communities that are served, and it's just really amazing. And that's why I think this is nothing short of just the smallest that we could do for Ed, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking this opportunity to recognize Ed. I've known Ed for several years in various capacities, working on Aging and Disability issues, both on the Commission and outside of the Commission. And I think one of the things that Ed brings to the table that's so important is that there's no partisanship on Aging and Disability. He has allowed us to focus on our mission at hand. He has set the tone for service in our community, and set that bar quite high as well, and in doing so, has served as a reminder to people in public positions that service should actually be what we are focused on. And I think that more commissions should look to Aging and Disability and Ed's work on Aging and Disability for an example of how to be successful and how to continue to focus on what's best for Simsbury. So Ed, I thank you so much for your service over so many years, and it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Diana?
Thank you, Eric. You know, Ed, it has been my absolute pleasure to get to know you, to work alongside you, to be the Vice Chair of the Commission with you for several years now, and you really left large shoes to fill. And, you know, I echo what so many people said, but not only have you been a leader in this community and an example of what service should be, but you did so humbly and never seeking attention, and it was never about you, but what was best for our community. And it's certainly something that I admire and strive to live and continue in your example. But we also had a lot of fun along the way, and I don't want to let that go unrecognized because you were always the first to jump in and help out, whether it's flipping burgers and hot dogs at the picnic in the park, or dressing in your ugly Santa sweater, ugly Christmas sweater, and jumping in to the Sensory Santa, and embracing when Commission members brought ideas, whether it's for aging or the seniors or people with disabilities, bringing ideas or important issues that need to be addressed for our town in ways to better our town, in ways to better our community, and also in ways to help our community members. And that came first and foremost. You embraced it all, you continue to serve our community, and I could not be more proud to not only work with you, but consider you a friend. And so, thank you, Ed, for all of your years of service. I admire you, and I look forward to seeing you in person again someday, and we'll definitely celebrate you then.
Thanks, Diana. Anyone else?
Come on. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Oh, that's Eric. I've been on the Commission for, I guess, about 10 years with Ed, so I firsthand seen the other people I've talked about. Ed really cared and supported the needs of the town residents. As a handicap individual myself, I can personally attest to the good work Ed has done. So if anyone, I thank him for his work on the Commission.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
Hi, it's Mark. I just wanted to wish you the best. Hopefully, we'll all have a chance to get together before the end of next year.
I'm counting on that, Mark. Jan, did you want to get in?
Yes, I want to add to the chorus. Ed, it has been a pleasure to work with you, to serve with you. Your commitment to this community is astonishing, and I'm so glad we're able to recognize that today. So wishing you very well, and thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ed, do you have any words of wisdom for this Commission that you are leaving behind?
I wish I did, but you know, over the past 26 years, I had an opportunity to work with a number of dedicated individuals, and without them, we wouldn't have been able to do what we accomplished. So of course, I thank all of them. I thank all of you, and you know, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much for being here tonight, Aging and Disability and Police Commission. Congratulations to both Eds, and thank you both for your service.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to switch gears. We have one final presentation tonight, and this is from the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center for an update. So we're joined by their Executive Director, Missy DeNuno, Linda Schofield, and Bob Hensley, who both serve on their board. So I'll turn it over to both of you.
Thanks. Can you all hear me?
Linda's gonna intro.
We. Hi, Linda.
Hi. Gosh, things keep changing on my iPad and my telephone, so technology has not been my friend today. So I'm just gonna turn this over quickly to Bob and Missy, and then I'll close, but basically, we're just gonna give you a little quick history that Bob's gonna do because he's been here from the beginning. Missy will highlight our most recent accomplishments, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about capital needs at the end. So go ahead, Bob.
History slide, please.
Bob, are you there?
Can you unmute?
No, I'm not muted.
There you go.
There he is.
I wouldn't want to talk very long without you being able to hear me because what I have to say is so important, and I know everybody wants to hear it. I just wanted to take a second to join the congratulations to the Eds. Both are great people. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, I got to know them much better than I did as a citizen. And I think the interesting thing, the thing I learned in the Board of Selectmen, which was shocking to me, was how many people in the town volunteer their time anonymously to make the town happen. Everybody doesn't appreciate how many people are involved in dedicating massive chunks of their lives to making Simsbury such a great place. And I think that's, I left this Board of Selectmen thinking that that was the greatest thing I learned, and both of these gentlemen are certainly examples of that. The most amazing thing about their service, and there were all kinds of stories, is that they do this anonymously. Like, probably very few people in town are aware of all the things that people like the Eds do to make Simsbury such a great place. So enough of that. But I wanted to spend some time, and Missy asked me to spend some time giving you a little bit of history about the Performing Arts Center. It is true that, like Methuselah, I've lived a long time with the Performing Arts Center. And I always used to go to the concerts. I don't know if you or any of you are old enough to know that the Talk at Mountain Music Festival used to be, it was like a, it was like a traveling circus. It used to be performed on temporary stages, I'll call them, temporary facilities that were erected in fields, cornfields, and anybody who would allow us to mow, you know, 15 acres, that's where it was held. In fact, I'm in my office, and a couple of years, it was held in the field, right next to, my office is in Avon, right on the Simsbury line, and it was held in the field right next to us, which is now, has hundreds and hundreds of apartments on it. And then it moved, but it moved around like a traveling circus. There were a couple of, I want to give, it's hard to give credit because you always miss somebody, but there are at least a couple of names that were First Selectmen that the genesis of doing something more permanent was in their mind. Anita Myler was one of those early, early-on people who had that vision. She did not see it come to fruition in her terms, but Tom Vincent, when he was First Selectman, had a passion for performances and had a passion for the Performing Arts Center, had a continuation of Anita's vision, I'll call it, and put together, I'm gonna call it a Blue Ribbon Panel because I was on it, so, and I always wanted to be on a Blue Ribbon Panel. So put together a group of people, and the idea was that, and their vision was, that we could build a permanent facility and ensure that the performing of the symphony and those wonderful summer concerts would be permanently located in Simsbury. And we worked with the Performing Arts, I mean, excuse me, the Hartford Symphony, who was very enthusiastic, were very enthusiastic about it, who worked with them, and at the time, a gentleman by the name of Tom Hurley, he was a state representative or a state senator, I'm not sure if he had become state senator then, but he went to the state on our behalf, and a whole bunch of really, really wonderful people who dedicated an incredible amount of time. We all went out and began to raise money. We hired a consulting firm in Avon called Gold Orlick, and they shepherded us through that fundraising process. And it took weeks, and it took a lot of guts to do that, but we raised a substantial amount of money. The vision was, or the dream, I'll call it, at that time, because all of us shook our heads, and this would have been like in the late summer, fall of the year before, was to have that facility built and the symphony performing the next summer. So like, you know, dreams do come true. I mean, Walt Disney told us that. So amazingly, we get a wonderful grant from the state, we raised a lot of private money, and the town helped us, and we put up that facility. For the most part, what you see today, which was Phase One, it was Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, and Phase Four. Phase Two and Three and Four, you probably have seen in the capital proposal that was submitted to Maria in mid-October, I guess. But some of the elements of that were, at the time, envisioned by this group. So we were raising money to put up Phase One, in essence, the bandshell, most of us hated that phrase, but the bandshell that you see today. And then there was Phase Two, which was the back dressing rooms, some bathrooms and dressing rooms and offices, and then expand the parking lot and so forth. Those are all part of Phase Two, Phase Three, and Phase Four, the storage, which all, and pieces of, all of them were envisioned to happen in just a few years. And if you think about the time, 2003, when this was all envisioned, 2005, when we raised the money, and then to have that facility go up, no one in their wildest dreams, because we did this magic thing, no one in their wildest dreams thought anything but that the rest of it would be done in a couple of years. But we all know what happened in mid-2007 through 2008 until March 9th of 2009, when many folks lost, in some cases, half of their savings and their investments. And that was a very difficult time for a lot of people, and it certainly was a difficult time for nonprofits and for organizations that were trying to raise money. There were other obvious goals and objectives and educational commitments that this town was involved in, and so the dream, if you will, of having Phase Two, Phase Three, and Phase Four never came to fruition. And even though there were kind of fits and starts about trying to get that done, it just never happened.
You can go to the next slide.
Sorry?
I'm just helping Melissa advance the slides.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you'll hear me jump in every now and again.
I always need somebody to work with my props. So I appreciate that. So we've gone through a lot of maturation over the years, and during this time, early time, actually, the First Selectmen kind of ran the facility, and we had some modest success after it was initially, after it initially went up. The symphony was certainly our primary tenet, but we had some other wonderful concerts, and I probably was at all of them. So, and it was great fun, and it was a great thing. The town then, after the change in kind of an administration, the town tried to run it, but it was very difficult to have it make any money. And remember, I just told you the dates, so we're talking about now 2009, 10, 11, and 12. Very difficult time, hard to find a Very difficult time, hard to find a director that would come in and be able, in a part-time position, to try to develop the kind of thing that you had hoped to see. When I left the Board of Selectmen sometime around 2011 or 12, at the time Mary Glassman was, and I was the first Selectman, I asked her, I said, could I run this or try to see what I could do, because I knew so much about it? And she said, yes, and you have two objectives. You cannot lose money, and you have to prepare it to go private. And so, with the help of a lot of people, we put together a board. David, at the time, David was very helpful. And so, we put together a board and prepared it to go private. And within two years, we made money, we made money for those two years, and we created a board and filed for a 501(c)(3) status. And so, the next year, the third or fourth year now from there, we became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and private and separate from the town of Simsbury. That was great for a couple of reasons. One, we could raise money, which was a very difficult thing the town couldn't do. And it helped us to be able to do some of the pieces, kind of supporting pieces that were part of Phase, they were embedded in Phase Two and Three, things like chairs to help cut our costs, ticket booth, which Linda was incredibly heavily involved in. The shed, expansion of the shed and the storage facilities, the sound towers that you now see that are up and ready for use in the coming years. What else? Oh, the, and then the town was wonderful and forthcoming with fencing that you now see, which is beautiful around the facility. And there are other things that performers and people that come and wanna put on a presentation there need and that we need in order to be competitive. So, the history there is incredible, and the town has always been so helpful in maintaining, helping us maintain and to service the facility.
Next slide.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
There you go.
I'm done.
No, no, you were leading right into the collaboration piece.
Okay.
Excellent.
So I don't wanna step on your, I don't wanna step on anybody's position. So, as, as, as things were finished, the town helped to complete the venue, and as I said, we talked about how it was run and so forth. The Performing Arts Center through the town has applied for certain grants that, some of which, in fact, one which was to help put up the Phase Two and Phase Three, that particular grant did not go through. And so, that, together with an allocation that the town was going to make back in 2018, was a part of the things that we had hoped would help complete the facility. I mentioned the chairs and the storage facility, and the ticket booth, and the sound towers, and the fencing, and the gates, and the, the attempt, we hired Missy DiNuno as a full-time. That was a huge commitment on our part, and at the time, to hire a full-time, we hired a consultant who said, you need a full-time executive director who has experience in the industry. And I knew that personally, because although you can learn a lot as a citizen, and you can be heavily involved, you really need somebody who's got history and background in the industry to run the facility, because there are just things that you would otherwise not know, and mistakes that you might make, that an executive director that's full-time and embedded in the industry has that experience and knowledge. And Missy's been an incredible find for us, we think, and also has been an incredible resource to us to make sure that we are doing things that we need to do, and to keep us on track, and especially on track in times like we're going through now with the COVID-19 and all that's gone on for all of us and everyone during the last year. What else would you want me to talk about?
That's perfect, that leads right into me. So I'm gonna talk about me and the president. Thanks, Bob.
You bet.
So, if you wanna head to, we're gonna start in 2018, 2019. When I was hired as the executive director, one of my main goals was really to kind of review the business models that were already in place, the policies and procedures that were in place, and really take a closer look at those, what was working, what wasn't working, and, you know, how could we move forward to really ensure financial stability, as well as kind of be consistent with industry standards? And that's where, you know, when Bob references hiring someone with that industry experience, that's kind of where my background came into play. So just to give you a little framework for Performing Arts Center management, typically there's three types of business models that you're looking at when you're talking about programming. The first is the rental business model, which is primarily how we operate, because we are so small. The rental business model is no risk. You're basically signing a contract with someone who's renting your facility to use it, you're getting a license fee, and you're getting maybe some reimbursables for operational services that you're providing. So, you're, you're not putting your neck out there financially. Odds are, you know, you're making a little bit of money on it, which goes towards your general operating. So, every Performing Arts Center always tries to maintain a rental business model, just to make sure that, you know, they're paying back that bottom line. And then there's the presenting business model, which is basically where you buy the programming, so you're paying the artist fees, you're selling the tickets, you're taking the risk on those things. But the really nice thing about presenting is that you also get more reward. So, we were doing very limited presenting programming when I came on board. And one of the things we really wanted to do was focus on adding some of that. So, while, yes, we were taking a bit more of the risk, well, we're making a bit more of the reward. And, you know, the perfect example of that, and kind of our toe in the water, was Circus Murcus last year, which did very, very well for us. So, the reason we were able to do that particular program is because it was completely self-contained. They came with their own box office system, they came with all of the services that our small organization, just human resources-wise, it's just me full-time, in case you hadn't heard that before, just couldn't handle. So, the circus actually proved to be a wonderful addition, and really allowed, you know, our board to see, oh, okay, if we do take a little risk on something that's smart, we can actually kind of move into other business models. The third business model is kind of that producing model. So that's basically where you have creative control, too. When you're presenting, I didn't have creative control over the circus. They really have that control. But something like a September Fest is a very kind of simple model of producing, where literally soup to nuts, we are in charge of making that program happen. So, you know, one of the biggest focuses we're moving forward with, and we had intended to move forward with in 2020, was of course, really focusing on that, that middle model, that presenting model, where we're taking some risk, but also relying on others to kind of have a bit of creative control, so we can really buy the content and then present it to our community. So, 2018 was a little rocky, we lost some money that year. It was kind of a rebuilding year in my mind. 2019, we did quite well, we were able to bring in that circus, we were able to bring in Trantolo and Trantolo to do their charity concerts, which, that kind of programming's really meaningful to me, too. Yes, it is rental programming, but it wasn't just another commercial promoter bringing in a big name and walking away with all the money. This was a charity concert series, which I think, you know, as a nonprofit ourselves, we really identify with, and, you know, it's always about giving back to the community. So if I can bring in rental clients that are also doing that, all the better for all of us. And then this sports and wellness genre, that I think people forget about, we really are, and you're gonna hear me say this a couple times, more than a stage. So, yes, we are the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, but we do so much more than the performing arts, because we have this amazing seven-acre field at our fingertips that a lot of places just don't have access to. So we're able to do things like the Connecticut Volley Tournament, which, by the way, we were able to hold this year, thank you for your support in making that go forward. We worked very closely with all of our state and local health officials, it was a very successful event, and actually, this year proved to that organization, Connecticut Volley, that they are actually running now one of the top volleyball, grass volleyball tournaments in the country. So, to say that's hosted in Simsbury is a really cool thing. So that's really what we're talking about when we're looking at diversifying programming. You can go to the next slide. Where tragedy hits, the pandemic. But was it a tragedy? You know what? At first, I would be lying to you if I told you that we were cool, calm, and collected when everything happened, because our entire schedule got wiped. And you can imagine, when you're looking at your operating budget, that still has expenses within it that happen whether you have events or not, it gets to be a little bit dicey trying to figure out, okay, how are we gonna get through this? Large-scale events were canceled, guidelines were imposed that limited capacity, and, you know, one of the things you look at when you're hosting events is, what is the cost to put on the event versus kind of what is, what are you gonna make back? And when you really start to limit capacity, it really obviously impacts your bottom line in terms of the revenue that you're gonna take in versus your expenses. But after we did that, and we took some time, we all decided, okay, it's time for us to pivot, and that's a word we used a lot this year. What can we do to help the community, but also make sure that we stay viable? Things like fitness classes, that's the first thing we kind of hopped into, working with the Health Department to bring fitness classes onto the stage, socially distanced, of course, but, you know, these community members had their doors basically closed, because they couldn't have anyone indoors. And what really has, for many years, kind of been a challenge for us, when you consider how weather can impact events, became our greatest asset this year, in that we were outdoors. So, we use that to our advantage, we welcome fitness classes. My daughter's a dancer, and her dance school actually approached me and said, wait a minute, don't you run that Performing Arts Center in Simsbury? So we brought in their dance recital, and then, my goodness, boom, 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 dance recitals followed like wildfire. We worked with local arts and cultural groups to have rehearsals. So, there are a number of community members who met at the library, and the library had to close. So we had Kinetic Ukes, which is a ukulele group, every week onstage. We had the Flower Bridge Committee and other committees meeting onstage as well, which was really kind of a wonderful thing that we were able to do. The other thing that, you know, really became evident in this great pivot is that collaboration is key. So, my former colleagues at the Bushnell had some events that they unfortunately were unable to host at their facility, contacted me, put me in touch with some new promoters that we hadn't worked with at SimPAC yet, and that turned into things like the 100 Women of Color Awards, which then followed the next week with the Labor Day soiree from the same promoter. And they were so pleased with the experience and just what a gem SimPAC is, that they've already held dates for a Labor Day event next year. So, very exciting new business generated. And again, collaboration. So we have always worked very well with all of you at the town of Simsbury, and I really can't thank this board enough for kind of the vote of confidence you had in us this year, and holding last-minute morning meetings when we were all in our jammies just to approve a public gathering permit. That speaks volumes to the community, because you made things happen, and it's not lost on me that we couldn't do this without you either. So, thank you for that. The other thing we did is we worked with the 350th Committee. So we had planned to do a very large-scale September Fest event in line with the 350th anniversary. Unfortunately, we knew that couldn't happen. So again, got creative. One of our SimPAC marketing committee members, Jay Sloves, had done some history timeline work previously with other venues, mentioned this concept, as I was kind of talking through with him, how we wanted to continue to work with the 350th Committee, but come up with something that was safe and socially distanced. And that led to the 350 History Walk, which, at least based on the feedback that I've received, was very positive. So that will be, it's down now for the winter, because we don't want it to get damaged, but that will be back by popular demand in the spring for anyone who has not yet seen it, and I encourage anyone to please take a look, because it was an incredible piece of art. And I will say, you know, as a Performing Arts Center, that's what we're all about. It's not just having a theatrical show on the stage, it's also about kind of curating art for people to see. And so, that led us to think about, oh, how can we use that beautiful fence that all of you were so kind to assist us in making happen in a way that we did with the 350th Committee? And so, I would encourage you to look forward to, you know, we're looking at collaborations with other arts organizations, maybe showcasing some artwork on there in the future. So it'll really create a nice artistic experience all the way around, even for people coming by on the path. And then, of course, our friends at Culture Parks and Rec, we did a movie night last year, and then kind of that seamlessly led into our collaboration with them in the 350th to do the two movie nights this year. Every year, those have been so well-received. I know, working with Tom Tiberzki, we have, you know, our wheels are always turning, thinking of ways we can collaborate, and I'm sure you will see more movies in the future. Working with the Chamber of Commerce to do basically a reverse Spooktacular, where folks could stay safe driving through and experiencing a Halloween event with their family, you know, this is what it kind of became all about this year. And I know that going forward, collaboration is gonna be key to make sure that, you know, yes, Eric, well, I love to say that the end of next year, we're all gonna be gathering, and it's gonna be hunky-dory, there's gonna be a little bit of time the first half of the year where we're gonna have to continue to kind of stay in these models and, you know, help each other out. So I'm looking forward to continuing that work with our friends. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, as you can imagine, you know, yes, programming is so important, but when you are faced with managing a nonprofit in general, fundraising is key. Never mind managing a nonprofit when a pandemic hits and your core business is kind of obliterated. So we had started in 2020, in January, working with a consultant, because we knew, as a nonprofit arts organization, that having an annual giving program was gonna be key. So you heard Bob talk about, historically speaking, we did a lot of fundraising around projects. So it was a very transactional type of fundraising, where a donor would provide money, and they would get a brick, which would then go towards building a ticket booth, et cetera, et cetera. Or a chair, which would then go towards putting their name on that chair. What we really needed to establish, and dipped our toe a little bit in the water with in 2019, but really need to establish this year, was a true annual giving program. So we worked very hard to do that. We worked to purchase and implement a customer relationship management software program, which is key when you're really trying to engage with your donors and your constituents. And, you know, we have implemented that. I'm sure some folks who are listening tonight maybe received our solicitation around Giving Tuesday, you probably would have noticed it was a bit more fleshed out than years past. There were photos and a story to tell, and all of the donations are now being tracked with immediate thank-you notes coming from systems, and we have kind of data for all of our donors, so that we can actually have active conversations. It's really a huge step forward for us, just in terms of professionalizing and making sure that we're touching the customer the way that we need to. And then, of course, thank God, we were fortunate to receive some help with COVID relief funding. So we received the PPP loan, as well as the maximum amount for an SBA loan, which we are holding to make sure that we are safe and secure, because one never knows, it's still a bit of a volatile climate when it comes to considering the pandemic. We received the Supporting Arts Grant, just shy of $5,000 for that. And just most recently, Governor Lamont had announced the $9 million in COVID relief funding that he had set aside and worked with for the arts organizations, and we received $19,000 for that grant, which, for an organization of our size, was substantial. So we were very, very pleased with that. As you can imagine, you know, we've committed an incredible amount of time and energy into these initiatives, and so we will continue doing that, we will continue making sure that we are doing things to maintain a sustainable model, and certainly intend to capitalize on the fact, especially going into this year, that we are outdoors. And so, we have this opportunity to kind of work with others and create new additional programming, and that's what it's all about. So, one of the things that, you know, I've learned in my career is that programming is, let's call it the sexy item that fundraisers or funders really, really respond to. And so, when we're going after folks for our annual fund, we're obviously making sure that we're talking heavily about programming, because the number-one thing that I heard when I first started here is, why don't you use the facility more? You have such a great facility, why isn't there more going on down there? And so that is our commitment this year, is to talk more to our constituents, really respond, I'm working with our marketing committee, as well as some folks involved in programming on our board, to really flesh out some series programming next year. So, you know, with COVID, we learned we can do things during the day. So, when those larger-scale events like the Talcott Mountain Music Festival and Trantolo and Trantolo- and Trentolo come back into the fold during the week, we can still do other things and really make sure that that stage is lit up. And we proved that stuff to ourselves this year. We went from 2019, having 35 active usage dates, so that's between, you know, whether it's an event with patrons or rehearsals or load-ins, to over 80, once we started using that stage for fitness classes. So we more than doubled our programming and intend to continue to kind of build on that momentum going forward into next year. So again, that's the sexy stuff. But as we grow with all of that, we have to grow in terms of physical plant. And so that's where we start talking about the future and where Linda's going to tell you about how we really are relying on the town to assist in supporting with kind of that build-out of the physical plant and, you know, all of the funding that goes with
Thank you, Missy. I'm going to try to go very quickly. I know we're way over on our time here. So I think Missy covered really well what a great job she's done this year in pivoting us. As we look forward to long-term competitive viability, a key component there is having the capital build-out that Bob talked about being planned 15 years ago. Without completion of the capital facility, we end up having to rent a lot of things at great expense that aren't necessarily particularly lovely or as functional as if we truly built a backstage. So that's kind of what I want to talk to you about. If you might remember from the early slide, there were four original phases. We did Phase 1. Phase 3 is largely complete. That was the sound towers, parking and drainage, which is on the CIP already, the ticket booth and the fencing. So Phase 3 is pretty much taken care of. Phase 2 and 4 were both about doing the backstage and it doesn't make any sense to have them done in two different phases. So that's been combined in our plans. So Phase 2 really is the back-of-the-stage area, but it's much more than just a backstage. Let me talk to you a little bit about what would be in Phase 2. It would be everything from staff workspace, because if we want to expand programming, we need to have a little more staff and a place for them to work. We have multi-use rooms that could be used as dressing rooms, as board meeting rooms, as storage space, as rehearsal rooms, as rooms where other arts organizations in town or other nonprofits could also hold their meetings if they wanted to. You know, lots of use for sort of multi-use space inside. The advantages of building the backstage area, first and foremost, from my opinion, it eliminates the, I think, very ugly trailers that we rent every year for something like $25,000 a year, and that price is going up every year. So it certainly would, you know, reduce our annual operating expense. And it's not a particularly ideal place for performers because they have to actually exit the backs of the current stage, step outside, and then go up a set of stairs into these trailers. So there really is sort of a lack of security there and they get exposed to the weather, et cetera. A big issue for our patrons, as well as many other people who use the general area, is the lack of public restrooms. I know this is probably the biggest motivator for you guys. But people not only who are at the concerts, but people using the bike path, the dog park or the Rotary Park playground would all have access to the restrooms that we would plan to have included in the backstage area. Permanent office space, I mentioned, we can't really use the office that we have now. Can you all hear me? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Correct me, I ought to have checked at the beginning. And so we need permanent area for Missy and her staff to work in and storage capacity. So, you know, I don't want to go on, but there's lots of reasons why we do really need to move forward and get this planned and completed. I have been talking with other potential funders. There is a grant program at the state that I've spoken with someone, they plan to fund it again next year. The grants are capped usually, as I recall, around $125,000. It's called the Good to Great Program. So we will definitely apply for that next year. I also, in fact, just today, was speaking with another large potential private donor with a foundation, and they'd be willing to consider putting significant money in, but if and only if the town also matches that kind of contribution. And then, of course, if we had the combination of money from the state, from the town and from this large private donor, then we would, you know, be able to do some additional fundraising from smaller donors to round out the project, which all in is probably almost up to $1 million between the site work that needs to be done and such and the actual construction of the building. We did submit to you a capital request, which should be in your packet. And Maria has that, and we're hoping for a favorable response on our request for the Phase 2 backstage. Being that I'm on the Board of Finance, I do know all too well, as you guys do, that if we don't get on the CIP soon, that once all of the Board of Ed stuff starts hitting, it's going to be, you know, 20 years or more before there's any room in the capital budget to accommodate our, you know, relatively speaking, small project. Next steps for us in terms of Phase 2? We do have a draft architectural plan that was donated by Phase 0. It's just a rough plan with a schematic sketch. And so there's significant more architectural work to do on that, but at least it gives us a vision of what we hope to build. Jeff Shea has been great to work with in terms of helping us do some site plan investigation. You know, the floodplain issues are significant in that area. So he's agreed to help us with a little bit of that, and then we will need to do some additional site plan work. We'd have to hire somebody to do that. And then, obviously, all we need to get approvals of all of the architectural plans and the like. And as I mentioned, we'll be applying for the STEEP grant. So let me just open it up if there are questions. I'm happy to take them, or Missy, or Bob, but we're just here, like many people, in line to ask for your help with getting Phase 2 done. Thanks for your indulgence. Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Linda, Bob, Missy. Does the board have questions?
Hey, guys, Chris, just real quick. Yeah, I've learned a lot about the PAC because I, you know, I spent a fair amount of time with Bob Hensley, you know, offline and stuff. And it's just remarkable what that team has done. Again, just like Bob said, we talked about it, just the fact that that project exists with volunteers and it's just phenomenal because, again, 99% of the town, Simsbury residents just drive by it and just assume it's there and it's probably paid for by the town and people paid for their, were paid for their time. And it's just remarkable. So thank you, guys, everybody. I think it's worth it, though, Missy, to mention that you talk about productions or talking about changing your business model to generate revenue. But I think it's probably should be clear that that's a nominal amount of revenue that really is not focused on these types of capital, paying for these types of capital improvements, correct?
Right. That is absolutely correct. So it's all going to general operating.
Yeah, so we should always think about, I just want to make sure that's out there. Yeah, I just want to make sure that's out there on people if this goes to the whole concept.
Chris, if I can just amplify on that a bit. You know, we've twice had a consultant over the last 15 years who helped with strategic planning and, you know, educated us about the similar kinds of organizations like ours. And most other organizations have a significantly larger portion of their ongoing operating budget covered by donations. We historically have actually tried to make it look more significantly with operating revenue, with a little bit of just, you know, donor-supplied cash in addition. And that's what Missy was talking about, trying to expand, because most other organizations have a much stronger donor base. And one of our biggest difficulties in getting people to donate is that they assume that the town, you know, pays us to do this. So you're absolutely right in pointing that out.
Yeah.
It's another thing, I think.
Just one other thing, selfishly, I'd like you to, go ahead, Bob.
It's okay. I just was going to say that so much that you can learn. It's a fascinating industry. And I know during that time when I was trying to put that together several years ago, I became familiar with a number of promoters and learned so much from them. But the financial model at the time is something that we've tried to attack by eliminating some of the expenses that promoters, when they would come to us, most of the time when people would see me, maybe even you, Chris, would say to me, hey, what a great concert. Why don't we have more of that? You've got to get more of those in here. And so we would try to do that, but we had to climb over some fixed and overwhelming costs that the promoters would have to overcome in order to bring those groups here. So with Missy's help and the board that we currently have and Linda as the chair, we've been able to peck away at eliminating some of those kinds of costs that drive promoters away. So I think, you know, it's a learning curve. Missy's helped us so much in that learning curve. And it is such an iconic piece. I mean, people went, some people within 15 miles of here don't even know it's down there. Well, I mean, when you say the Performing Arts Center, two people in Avon, they go, what? Where's that? And so, you know, we need to get the message out. It's such an iconic piece of property and such a wonderful gift that Simsbury has. And we really, really, and this is a speech to the board, I mean, we really need to leverage this thing that we somehow have been able to put in the middle of our town. And I hope that that happens as we climb out of the COVID-19, hopefully climb out of the COVID-19.
Well, thank you. What, just one last thing, I would full support, Missy, of pushing the sports and wellness. You know, selfishly, as a father with a couple of athletic kids, young athletic kids, you know, there can be weekends where I spend hundreds and not thousands of dollars. There's, it's replicated across our town, whether I'm traveling to Long Island or Cape Cod or Vermont or Massachusetts, whatever, for a sporting event, you know, a jamboree or which would have you. Now, certainly, you've got to work with the Wizard of Tom, Tiberzki there, because it's a big scheduling challenge because you only have so many prime days. But I think that adds a whole other element to that space. We've got to be careful with that turf. It's very important. But tournaments, I think, add a level of life and vibrance down there. And it also, obviously, it supports the ancillary business, whether it's a hotel or it's Fitzgeralds or whichever. I think that's just something that you continue to pursue, certainly, as long as it doesn't cost us. And there's, we have ample organizational assistance from our local groups. But that's something that I think we have, it's been well-under served and that space can be utilized for that. It's my full support on that.
Thank you. And huge shout out to Orlando and crew because before that tournament, I'm sure in future tournaments, they're aerating, like that grass doesn't just magically happen. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and we work very closely with that team to make sure everything works the way it should. So thank you for your support in that area. We really appreciate it.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Well, thank you so much again for presenting tonight and walking us through the history and looking forward to good things to come. And my most, I think, fascinating takeaway from this presentation is the fact that what could have been a really terrible thing happening to the Performing Arts Center with COVID, I think, is going to actually position you to be even more competitive in the years to come.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
All righty. Thanks, guys.
We will jump into the first Leckman's report and then the Town Manager's report. And mine is focused primarily on economic development. Some things to share, an application has been filed for the renovation of the Gibbs Mobile Station. That site's been vacant for several years and the new operator is looking to establish a gas station at that location. I'd like to welcome Freedom Finds Junk Removal, located on Hot Meadows Street, right on the Simsbury-Grandy line. Burn Body Camp is slated for a soft opening this month, expects to have their grand opening in January there in Andy's Plaza. The Posture Bar Pilates and Chiropractic Studio has officially opened in the Weldon Building. Northwest Community Bank is targeting in early December to open their downtown Simsbury branch where the former Santander branch was. And Room Market and Cajun Eatery, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, so R-O-U-X. They've signed a lease in Sittler's Green to take over the former Sakimora space, and they're working on revitalizing that space and will be opening soon. Lastly, I wanted to congratulate Brian and Sandy DeVoe of Fitzgeralds, who are celebrating 10 years of as owners of this local institution. One of the great things about our town is a locally-owned business community, and I want to, again, extend my gratitude to the Simsbury Main Street Partnership and the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, who are doing incredible work during this unprecedented time. No doubt, many businesses in our business community are struggling, and I'm grateful for the work of both of these organizations. Lastly, Reefs Across America. Each year, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Abigail Phelps' chapter, they do their annual wreath sale. They lay wreaths on the graves of local veterans. And this year is no exception. A ceremony socially distant will be held at noon on Saturday, December 19th. That's this Saturday at the cemetery on Plank Hill Road. Maria, floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to begin my report this evening with a coronavirus update. Since we last met shortly before Thanksgiving, we have transitioned to the red alert status for the purposes of DPH and their municipal COVID alert system. What that means is that we now have more than 15 COVID cases per 100,000 residents. And for the two-week period ending December 5th, we have 23.7 cases per 100,000 residents. And our COVID positivity rate for those being tested in town was 4.2%. Since my last report, we've gone from 33 cases over a two-week period that ended on November 12th to 83 cases over the most recent two-week period ending December 5th. Since November 12th, the largest increase of cases on a percentage basis, week over week, did occur between the weeks of November 14th and November 21st. I mentioned previously that unlike the spring, we're continuing to see community spread of the virus increase while our congregate setting is remaining somewhat stable. Our recent contact tracing done by the Farmington Valley Health District has identified that the source exposure and the majority of cases is really from four areas. One are social gatherings and parties. The second are occupational exposures. The third are sports outside of school. And the fourth are just travel-related. So as a reminder, I do want to encourage folks to be mindful of the gathering sizes that are currently in place, which are 10 people at private residences, 25 people indoors otherwise, and 50 people at outdoor events at commercial venues. Like many of our businesses and organizations throughout town, the rise of COVID is affecting our workforce. Our workforce, for the most part, has remained healthy. However, the total number of staff members that we had quarantined during the month of November was 19. And those 19 staff members did not have COVID, but it was because they had come into contact with a person that had tested positive for the virus, whether that was at work or in another setting. From mid-November to December 1st, we've had four staff member positive cases. So as a result, we are experiencing temporary staffing shortages at times, and our response time for non-emergency situations may be a bit delayed. We ask our residents for continued kindness and patience during this time as we do our best to ensure that our critical infrastructure and essential services remain in place. as we do our best to ensure that our critical infrastructure and essential services remain in place. We continue to closely monitor the status of our walk-in hours for both Town Hall and the library. Uh, we currently have Town Hall open for walk-in visitors without an appointment on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings. And our library is still open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays to walk-in visitors. Um, we had recently expanded Saturday hours uh until three-thirty in the afternoon at the library. Um, I do want to note that many libraries in the Farmington Valley are now closed for walk-in visitors. And they have returned to curbside uh service following Thanksgiving. So again, we will continue to monitor and report back if we envision our walk-in hours needing to to mo- uh be modified or potentially cease. At this time, you know, Memorial Hall does are being closed for walk-ins until further notice. Our medical services at the site have been canceled as well until further notice and our dialer ride services have been scaled back. I want to commend our social services staff and all of the generous uh businesses and residents in our community for contributing to our food program. Um, at our last distribution, we served a hundred and thirty-one households. We gave out thirty-four bags of kid-friendly food and snacks. We provided a hundred boxes of food that were given to us by the Salvation Army. And we were able to deliver to thirty-four homebound individuals and families. Uh, we were also incredibly fortunate. We received a very generous donation from Metropies. And they donated three hundred and fifty meals to help feed our residents in need. Um, and many of those were given out at the last food distribution. Under Department News and Notes, um would like to very much welcome Sean Crowley. Um, at the December seventh uh Police Commission meeting, he was approved to fill one of our four patrol officer vacancies currently in the department. He is serving as a police officer in Torrington, where he has served since two thousand and seventeen. Uh, in addition to um being part of the Patrol Division, he has participated in the Special Olympics torch run and has been recognized many times by his supervisors and the camp staff for his commendable work. He's earned an associate's degree in criminal justice. And he will begin his career with us uh the first week of January twenty twenty-one. So congratulations and welcome to Sean. And a quick note from our office, Eversource has notified us that they will be conducting aerial inspections along their rights of way over the next few weeks and they'll be utilizing drones. Um, we did share some information through our social media accounts about that. And they've provided us with a link that's in the Town Manager's report um that will give residents who are interested in learning more about that some additional information. And that's it for this evening.
Okay, thanks, Maria.
Thank you.
Um, there's select action, uh Item A, Tax Refund Request. Is there a motion effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of twenty-two thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-six cents and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Uh, Item B is the extension of temporary, the extension of temporary suspension of acceptance of cash payments. Um, so since the pandemic started, really, the town has not been accepting cash out of an abundance of caution to curb the spread of the virus. And the Town Manager shared that, you know, she feels that it's working well. And with very few exceptions, people have been able to pay electronically. And her recommendation is to extend the suspension of cash payments basically until further notice, presumably until the spring or summer, assuming that infections are significantly lower at that time. And I wanted to open it up for conversation, see if uh if, you know, folks would be comfortable with that approach. Okay. Is there a motion effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty to extend the uh the suspension of acceptance of cash payments until further notice? Acceptance may be authorized by the Town Manager or Finance Director. And also to waive transactions of five dollars or less until um uh further notice if check or electronic payment is not practicable. However, aquatic fees, ice ring fees, food concession transactions, and all golf course fees and purchases valued at five dollars or less should not be waived. And this would remain in effect unless it's revised or rescinded.
I'm moved.
I'll second that.
Mike seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We've received some incredibly generous donations really since the beginning of the pandemic. And we've received uh three more that are on the agenda tonight. Uh, the first is from a local business, Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming. They've offered to make a donation to support Simsbury Social Services. And I'll note that this is one of several donations they've made since the beginning of the pandemic. Is there a motion effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty to accept a donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming in in the amount of five thousand dollars for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department programs that assist residents in need?
So moved with our thanks.
I'll second that with our sincere thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next is a uh donation uh from um Trinity Episcopal Church, um also to support uh social services. Is there a motion effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty to accept a donation from Trinity Episcopal Church in the amount of two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department Holiday Program that assists residents in need?
I'll move that.
Second.
With our thanks. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 There's also a donation uh for the Simsbury Police Department. And this comes from uh uh Ron Perry. And this uh donation would be uh targeted for the Police Department's Community Policing Fund, which supports programs in the community such as Project Lifesaver, the Junior Police Academy, uh self-defense classes, and more. Is there a motion effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty to accept a monetary donation of five thousand dollars from Ron Perry, previous by the Police Department?
So moved.
Second.
With our thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Ron.
Well done. Thank you.
Item F is a proposed State Historic Preservation Office Planning and Survey Grant for the Meadowwood Barnes. This is a grant opportunity that the um the town has that would uh provide funding for us to do a really good structural analysis on the barns, on the Meadowwood property. Um, some of these farms could be rehabilitated for historic preservation purposes. So this would go a long way in helping us evaluate their condition. Maria, is there anything you wanted to add on this item? Any questions from the board? Is there a motion effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty to approve the application for the State Historic Preservation Office Planning and Survey Grant for the Meadowwood Barnes? And also to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all of the grant documents should we receive them?
I'm moved.
So, so moved.
You seconded Wendy?
Oh, second, yeah. I missed, I was coughing. I missed the first.
No worries. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Um, Item G, in your um packets is a proposed contract that's been negotiated with Ask Me. I can't say that, Ask Me, the town's largest union, um that represents about fifty of our employees. Uh, the contract's been ratified by the union and negotiated with the Town Manager's office. Maria, could you provide a brief overview of what's new in this contract? I know that it would be four years if it's approved.
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, Eric. So key highlights of the proposed agreement um would be a four-year contract. Um, and one of um the items that we are hoping to accomplish on management side was to do a better job of staggering our collective bargaining agreements organization-wide. Um, we found ourselves in a situation where we had five of our collective bargaining agreements coming due at the same time. Um, since our office um does do a lot of that legwork, um we serve as the chief negotiator for the town. We prepare the town's proposals, um we conduct the analysis um related to these contracts. And then just also the time of meeting with all of the the different um different groups. Um, having five contracts come due at the same time was really quite challenging. So um Ask Me was amenable to doing a four-year duration, which would help us to stagger um some of the contracts in the future. Um, the general wage increases um as tend to be agreed upon um were two and a quarter for year one, two point three five for years two and three, and two and a quarter in year four. Um, that is comparable with what we are seeing for negotiated settlement data across the state. Um, CCM does provide a very comprehensive data reporter to us monthly. And we are seeing settlements generally coming in around two and a quarter percent. It's also comparable to what we recently settled with our dispatcher's group for um and what the police bargaining uh group currently has for the current year. Um, we were able to get the union to agree to increase um the years of service needed from our employees in order to qualify for retiree medical insurance coverage. Our employees also agreed um to increase the percentage that they contribute to our defined benefit plan um with three-quarter percent uh increases in year uh two and three of the contract and a half percentage increase in year four of the contract. They did also agree to the health insurance plan management changes um for both pharmacy and medical management. Uh, you may recall when we talked about the dispatcher's contract that um organization-wide, if all of our groups move to these plan management changes in aggregate, we do anticipate over a hundred thousand dollars in savings annually. They also agreed to the medical insurance um copay increases as proposed. Um, we updated the vacation carryover timelines and process to really streamline that for us and and to reduce some administrative burden. Um, the boot allowance was really important to our employees um in this group. And that's their safety boots. That's very, very important to their work. Um, we had fallen behind um many towns in our area. Um, and so gradually increasing their boot allowance, um ultimately reaching two hundred dollars for an annual allowance um in the final year of the contract. They also agreed to direct deposit for employees hired after the agreement was ratified. And we did uh quite a bit of housekeeping update language throughout the document to reflect the change in form of government. I'd also really like to thank Melissa. Um, she put together a phenomenal cost analysis of um the impact of this contract. It's very comprehensive. It includes wages, benefits, payroll taxes, um et cetera. So again, a comprehensive analysis that's been attached for your reference. And I uh am able to take any questions that you might have.
Thanks for the summary, Maria. Are there questions? Sean?
Maria, back, um, we, obviously, we had a a lengthy and important discussion at the Board of Finance on wages and contracts, et cetera. So um, you know, you referenced the two-two-five, the two-three-five, and then the two-two-five again. Um, you know, just, I I know you stated it, but just just for folks to hear again, there there's a ton of analysis that goes into that, right? Your office, Labor Council, everybody looks at at comparables and and that's across the hundred and sixty-nine municipalities, right? Um, there's, there's a ton of public data available on this, so it's not done in a vacuum or what just makes sense for Simsbury, right? And it it's, it's really, I, I want to make sure I'm capturing the the level of analysis that goes into that number, right?
Yes, thanks, Sean. No, there really is um a lot of analysis that does go into that. We look at both external data in in our municipal um sector as well as um the internal factors within our organization. And, you know, what had been mentioned at the Board of Finance, um I'll just maybe take a quick moment, is we operate under MIRA, which is the Municipal Employees Relation Act. So that is a special set of state statutes that apply specifically to local governments and Connecticut. So our world is a bit different um than the private sector world in terms of what is looked at. And we have a binding arbitration process. And so I think during perhaps Tri-Board, it was referenced that, you know, well, we just need to tell our employees to take a zero. And that's really very simplistic way of looking at it because negotiating wages is a mandatory subject of bargaining under MIRA. And if we do have a contract that's mid-contract, we in no way can compel the union to open up the contract to even discuss wages. And when we go to binding arbitration, there are a number of factors that are looked at, um such as the public interest, um financial capability of a community to pay, bargaining history, um the interest in welfare of employees, changes in cost of living, and existing conditions of employment for employee groups or similar employee groups, as well as wages, fringe benefits, and conditions of employment in our prevailing labor market. So there are a lot of factors, as Sean said, and a lot of analysis that goes into um what could we reasonably expect if, in fact, we had to go to binding arbitration? Um, we are seeing binding arbitration settlements come in around two, which is slightly less. But it's also a very costly um and expense, it's just a very costly process to have to go through that binding arbitration process. Um, and about quarter of a percent difference, we would pay more certainly in legal fees.
Yeah, and I think that's an important point right there. And I, that was what I was gonna ask about, you know? Um, you know, for the time I'm spent, the 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 prioritization, especially in a, you you guys do a great job and in a smaller staff. Um, you know, you folks are doing nine other things. So the ability to prepare for arbitration, especially with a larger, and again, arbitration is not a step we we or the unions ever want to get to because it means we can't agree. Um, you know, and it's it's the last resort. But as you articulated, you know, we also don't, we can't go in at zero um to that because that's simply not a reasonable offer from how how these contract negotiations work. So um, I I just, I I again, I I'm by no means an expert. I know you are. Um, and I'm thankful you and your your team is in there negotiating this. But I just, I think the more we can talk about it, because it is confusing for folks. Um, you know, and again, uh whether we've been doing this for five days or ten years or whatever, you know, there's a lot to this process that I I I don't think um even the most savvy and tenured folks in the private sector might understand. Right? And it it it's not to knock anybody's knowledge, but it's, I mean, that's why we have professionals like yourself and Melissa, who went to school and and studied in this space, right? Um, because it it is different. So um, you know, it's it it's particularly challenging, I know, because people hear two percent and then you hear steps and you hear wages and and the the salary is often, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's an important piece, but it is one piece. As you articulated, there's a substantial number of changes here. And by no means are we out to to take advantage of the employee. We're out to make a fair deal for both the taxpayer and for the employees. Um, because ultimately, we're, we are an employee that wants to, our employer that wants to attract and retain talent, right? And if we can't get good people to work here, then it might not even matter what we pay. So I I think that's just, uh, again, Eric started from a long-winded. But I think it's important that that when folks see and hear us, um, they shouldn't just take the two-two-five or two-three-five or i- i- in a vacuum, that there's an entire financial picture here at at play. And again, binding arbitration does tie both the union and the town's hands for you can only go so far.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, thank you. And if I could just quickly add, thank you so much for for that, Sean. Um, I really also just want to thank um the employees in this particular bargaining group. Um, they are our Public Works and Parks employees, um and they are essential employees. I think sometimes when folks think of essential employees, they don't think about all of our parks maintainers who, while we've been using our outdoor spaces in ways that have never been used before and in large volume, you know, of of trail users, et cetera. They're the folks that are out there keeping those um parks and trails uh up for us. And it's our public work staff who are keeping our roads up. And we're planning so carefully right now with COVID to make sure that when we have that big storm, um, we have people who can make sure that our roads stay safe and and passable so emergency vehicles can get through. And um, you know, folks at our sewer treatment facility, that when we need to flush our toilets, that they still are fully functional. Um, so everybody, you know, in this group just has an essential role that's so important to to our services. Um, and they've been, again, working so hard and trying to stay safe to make sure that our infrastructure keeps keeps chugging along and and they're doing a really great job of that. So I just wanted to thank them for that.
Yeah, and we're we're all very thankful that they're there and doing their job, too.
Are there other questions on the contract? Okay. Is there a motion effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed successor collective bargaining agreement between the town of Simsbury and Ask Me, Local twenty-nine forty-five of Council Four, AFL-CIO, Simsbury Public Works and Park Employees, which will enter into effect retroactively from July one, twenty nineteen, and expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Second, I'll second.
Second.
I heard Mike second. Uh, any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item H is a proposed uh compensation and benefits for uh fiscal year twenty twenty-one for non-union employees. Uh, this agenda item has a few components. Um, the first is a proposed uh wage increase for our non-union staff. And these are primarily people in department head and other leadership positions. Uh, the Personnel Subcommittee let met last week and endorsed the Town Manager's recommendation for wage increases of two and a quarter percent for non-union staff. Uh, the other component is uh proposed changes to the health insurance plan that raise copayments, uh among other things, and that provides some savings to the town. So we're talking about two things. So we're talking about two things here, one that costs money and one that saves money. But I'm not, I'm not, you know, saying that both of these things are equal, but I think that it would be helpful to just break them apart for a moment. Before we talk about the wage increases, Maria, could you summarize what the health insurance plan changes are?
Sure, great, thank you. So the plan management changes that we're proposing for our non-union staff are the same pharmacy and medical management plan changes that we have now since adopted for Ask Me and adopted for Dispatchers about a month ago. So they would be following suit with those plan design changes. And the proposed copay changes are the same as we adopted for Dispatchers and Ask Me. So again, following suit with that. My hope is that if you do support these recommendations this evening, that will help us just from an administrative perspective because we will roll out the changes for the non-union staff with the same timeframe that we do these changes for Ask Me.
Any questions on the health insurance component? Okay, Maria, would you be able to just provide some context behind the other recommendation around the cost of living increases?
Sure. So this is for a relatively small group of staff. It is mostly, most of our department heads, if you are unionized, but most of our department heads are not. And the staff in my office who meet the confidential exemption under MIRA. So that is primarily, not exclusively, but primarily who the wage increase would apply to. And again, it's fairly consistent with what we are seeing for negotiated settlement data throughout the state as well as what we have awarded to other bargaining groups within the town.
Okay, thanks, Maria. Are there questions from the board?
It was also correctly wrong what we had budgeted for in the prior budget cycle, Maria.
That is correct.
Maria, just, Eric, maybe you could shed some light for the, for some of us out there who work in the public, the, excuse me, private sector, enter for the town. The, the non-unionized leaders of, department leaders, the increase is based upon, the increase is, is given regardless of merit performance. Is that correct?
So for our non-union staff, they do have to have a satisfactory or better performance review in order to receive the increase. That is different from our unionized employees. Our unionized employees receive the increase regardless of performance. So there is that distinction with our non-union staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sean?
I was just gonna say, as I've, I've had this discussion with prior first selection, it is within the purview of, of Maria and previously the first select persons to divvy up that, that based on a, on a more merit-based system if they wanted. But this is, as long as I've been on here, again, I know that's not valuable. But for as long as I've been here, this is, this is how it's been done, that it's been spread essentially evenly amongst the non-unionized folks.
Other questions from the board? Is there a motion effective December 14th, 2020 to approve a two and a quarter percent general wage increase for unaffiliated staff in non-provationary status? Would be retroactive to July 1, 2020, pending satisfactory annual performance evaluation. The salary ranges for these classifications be adjusted accordingly. And also to approve a two and a quarter percent general wage increase for unaffiliated staff in a probationary status upon successful completion of their probationary period. If the salary range for that classification be adjusted accordingly. And also to approve the proposed health insurance and copay and plan management changes for unaffiliated staff as presented and implemented as soon as practical.
I'm moved.
I'll second that.
Mike seconded. Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item I is specific to the Town Manager's compensation and benefits. Maria's contract calls for a general wage increase that's in line with other non-union staff upon the completion of a satisfactory performance review. Normally, any salary increase would be retroactive to July 1st, which is the beginning of the town's fiscal year. And acknowledgement of the incredibly challenging year that we're in, that's putting pressure on budgets everywhere, Maria has offered to defer this wage increase until February 1st, which is when her new contract was into effect. And this recommendation was endorsed by the Personnel Subcommittee. I wanted to see Sean or Wendy if there's anything you wanted to add from that discussion.
Yeah, we just really appreciate that offer to the town of Maria to push that off for six months.
Agreed.
Okay, I'll second that.
Were there any questions from the board on this recommendation? Is there a motion to approve a two and a quarter percent general wage increase for the Town Manager effective February 1, 2021? And also to apply the adopted health insurance and copay and plan management changes for unaffiliated staff to the Town Manager and implement as soon as is practical?
I'm moved. Second.
I heard Chris.
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me. Is there any other, anything anyone wanted to add? All in favor?
Thank you very much, Maria.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Item, see if we can get Maria back. There she is. Item J is, honestly, please kind of pause for a second. This one's really cool. It's a shared services agreement between the town and the Board of Education. And, you know, I'm asked frequently by residents what the town is doing to work with other towns in our area across the Farmington Valley. But what I don't think that people fully understand is that there are also opportunities for our town to work with itself. And by that, I mean our Board of Education. So we have started dabbling in this space more seriously this year with a combined finance department. And the MOU in your packets tonight would both deepen and further formalize this agreement. So Maria, could I ask you to walk through some of the highlights and then we could open it up for questions?
Absolutely, thank you. I think this is pretty cool, too, Eric. I'm, I'm really excited about this partnership. You may recall that the Board of Education had an immediate need earlier this year for some financial management and financial oversight due to staff members leave of absence. And we're very fortunate in that Amy actually did have experience in a shared services department and had served as a financial agent for a Board of Education. So she very graciously stepped up and was willing to help us in the Board of Education out with that. That arrangement started middle of January. And over the last year, that relationship and partnership has continued to evolve and grow. So she is providing full financial, again, oversight and management services to the Board of Education on things such as accounting, payables, payroll. She's helping with budget, audit, supervising their staff in this area. So she's just done a really phenomenal job. The superintendent and I have been incredibly pleased with this arrangement. We've been very happy with the, the work that Amy has done for us. I really think it's improved our collaboration and communication. And again, it's just a really terrific partnership. So we are looking to make that arrangement more permanent and continue to really merge and grow those shared services in that area. We also had an opportunity to document some of the other services that the town has more recently absorbed, such as some of the risk management services that our deputy town manager is also providing now to the Board of Education. And we also took the opportunity to document our longstanding shared services that we've had in other areas such as AT, police, parks maintenance, and engineering. So really making this a comprehensive and transparent document of the shared services between the town and Board of Education where we are, in fact, exchanging money. There are some additional shared services that we do in the area of employee benefits. But that, in that particular area, it's not something where the two parties are exchanging money. So at this point in time, we did not capture that within this agreement. But again, feel that this is a very good, comprehensive document of our shared services at this point in time.
What questions do people have?
Eric, this is Mike. I don't have any questions. I think this is just really, really good stuff. And thank you both from the Town Manager's office, their staff, and then the Board of Ed for working together to benefit the town.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Totally agree. Any other questions? Great. Is there a, so, I gotta find the motion. Is there a motion effective December 14th, 2020 to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Simsbury and the Simsbury Board of Education for shared services subject to approval as to form by the Town Attorney?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for your work on this. And thank you to our colleagues on the Board of Ed side. Would not be possible without them. The last item in the under-selection action is a revision to our business development incentives policy. So this is part of the toolkit that the town has to attract and retain businesses in town. We've asked the Economic Development Commission to review the policy and propose any, any changes that would provide more guidance and specificity to how to apply the business incentives in a way that encourages economic development, but is also fair to our taxpayers and, and provides transparency. First, I wanted to thank Peter Van Loon and Tom Earl from the Economic Development Commission for their work on this. Maria, could you highlight for the board in what ways this new policy is different than the current policy?
Yeah, absolutely, Eric. So one of the goals that the EDC had was for us to simplify the policy document and for it to be more user-friendly. It was a bit unwieldy in its current form. I think it was over a dozen pages in length. So really to, to, again, make it more concise and user-friendly. We also thought that it was important to refine the targeted sectors of industry or other reasons that might be acceptable for granting an abatement. The existing policy, it's fairly, fairly broad. And thought that, you know, based on feedback that we had received from the Board of Selectment in terms of, again, sectors of industry and other reasons that have been important to you to, to do our best to try and refine that. We also wanted to revise the language around the abatement about, excuse me, the abatement amounts as well as the time periods for which somebody can have an abatement to reflect changes in state statute. It is much more general now. The minimum investments have been listed. For example, the 10-year cap, I believe, has been lifted as well. And Bob was really helpful to us in providing some guidance on that. And if folks have specific questions around that this evening, I think he would be best positioned to help us with that. We also worked about, I want to say not quite two years ago now, on creating an application review and analysis process. So it was really doing our best to make sure that we were documenting what that process is, but also enhancing that process and analysis a bit. This policy also reflects that we would have annual reporting requirements if an abatement was in fact granted based on job creation. And again, I would really like to thank Peter and Tom for their work on this. They spent a lot of time researching other, other policies, did some interviews and site visits with other communities. And they really took to heart some of the feedbacks that the Board of Finance had provided to them in terms of some components that might be helpful to them as well. So I think that they really did their best to try incorporate all of that feedback and research. And with the help of myself, Melissa, our assessor, our finance director, our planning director, and Bob, got to this, you know, revised guideline document for you to, to consider this evening.
Thank you, Maria, and of course, thanks to Tom and Peter for their work on this. So I think there's a couple of ways we could go on this. One, depending on where the conversation goes as we could pass this tonight. If there are, if there's feedback or there's concerns about the current draft, if Jackie is amenable, we could form a work group that I think in a meeting or two could work with the EDC in coming up with a revised version of this if there was feedback from the board. So let's open it up for discussion and see what questions people have. I could, I'll begin that, I, I think that giving tax breaks to businesses is, it's a tool in the toolkit, and it's a tool that I want to have, but I also think that it is, it can be a problematic tool. And I do appreciate some of the structure that this creates, both in helping to focus what are the industries or the kinds of businesses that would be the best candidates for this kind of treatment, but also helping to increase the public transparency in some of the reporting so that our residents can see exactly what we've offered to what businesses and for how long. So I think that's important. Anything anyone else wanted to add? So with the lack of discussion?
I do have something. Sorry, I was trying to get off.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Sean.
So we did, when, the last time, or one of the times we did a tax abatement, we, we had talked about, you know, the, correct me wrong, they, they, the, the variance in the, in the percentage, right? Because if the project did better than anticipated, basically, the owner received a bigger benefit that was intended. And I, I thought we had debated it at the time, at least I was a proponent of a cap, you know, as a result of that, you know, not to exceed from a, a benefit standpoint. So I, I, I would ask that that be considered here because I think that's an important factor. And, and again, I, I wouldn't, I'll respect the policy, but I, and and maybe it, it doesn't need to be, to be fully defined, but an avenue to go one or the other, either uncapped or capped. Because I, I think that's important and it should be dealt with at this policy level versus mine or whoever's opinion at the project level when it comes in. And again, Maria, I saw you shaking your head. Correct me if, you know, if, if the project does a million dollars better in, in value, et cetera, the, the benefit is substantially greater, right? And, and the, the taxpayers are essentially giving up even more potential revenue. So it, it's one thing to help, you know, a, a business at, at the end-time purpose. But once, you know, that business is stable and thriving, there should be, and I believe, an expectation to contribute more equally at that time to the tax base. Basically, they have the, the ability to pay at that point when the financing is more clear, when they're not in the full startup stage. At least is, is one phil-, you know, philosophical debate here. So I don't know if that was considered through the deliberations, but, but I would ask that that be considered within the scope of this policy. Does that make sense, Eric? Maria?
It does.
That, that makes perfect sense. Absolutely.
I would, I, I would agree, Sean, that, and I participated in that same conversation with you at the time. And it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't in question of that specific project. I think it was born out of the conversations around that project that this type of, that type of thinking and you'd, that type of management of the program expectations would be something that we should start to look to implement. So certainly that was, I don't want to lose, we shouldn't lose track of that intent when we, when, when we brought it up then. I think it still certainly has merit, especially going forward.
Yeah, and it's in no way to, to penalize the business owner or anyone else, but it's to quantify that, hey, this is what the taxpayers are willing to do to help this, you know, this business. Maybe, but at that point, then you're, you're basically on an even playing field with the rest of the business community. And we do expect the, you know, the, the equal contribution at that point is essentially, you know, at least my philosophy on the topic. So, thanks, guys.
Yeah. Is there other feedback?
Eric, just to answer you, I'd be happy to start a work group with the EDC if that's what the team wanted.
Yeah. This feels to me like a relatively straightforward addition that probably the EDC could, could consider and could be implemented without a work group, but I...
Even better. That's great.
That's just my initial reaction when I see Maria nodding.
We could, we could do that as well, whichever your preference.
Right, and, sorry, we'll finish this. Sorry, I've gone.
I mean, what I would, would say if it's appropriate is just to invite Jackie and I to their next meeting. And we could have a discussion about this item, but I think this is relatively straightforward.
I'm happy with that.
Okay, super. Sean, were you gonna add something else?
Yeah, my only other comment, if, I, I don't have the old policy in front of me, but I thought there was a prohibition on strict residential in the prior... but I thought there was a prohibition on strict residential in the prior policy.
I believe you're right, Sean. That's what I recall.
But it's possible.
I would be in favor of that restriction staying in place.
Yeah, and the intent was that, you know, standalone apartment buildings, standalone housing, et cetera, was, was not an intended vehicle for this policy. This policy was not an intended vehicle for those types of developments.
Sean, that's my recollection that it was kind of a mixed use was a different use, but just straight residential was not.
No, you're right, Mike. And, and having said that, though, I wouldn't be averse to having low income or, or other type of housing that, that benefits an, an underserved population or a population that clearly could be helped by this type of policy, because I believe we did that for the property on the North End, right, Mike, years ago, where there was some sort of tax abatement there to help with the, the accessible apartments and housing that was built on the North End. So.
You're right.
Maybe just a, 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 a quick definitive, because again, you know, Eric, we are talking about affordable housing. And it, it might, I know it, this, this policy doesn't preclude us from using it for that, but it might be an interesting statement to come out and say that it's intended for affordable housing or otherwise, but not for apartments or, or, you know, freestanding residential or something like that.
It's a great addition.
Again, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think this needs, you know, 10 meetings and, and this is important to get done.
I don't think so either.
Sorry, Jackie, I should have thought of that before.
That's okay. I think there's some details we should make sure we, we have and we bring to EDC. And if we have the prior policy, I think that's something they don't have or they may not be aware of these details.
Yeah, that would, that would be important, just to have a quick review of the prior versus the new to make sure there's not something important that, that's missing. I'm sure somebody on Maria's team has already done that, but let's just make sure that EDC has that information.
Yeah, I think this is good guidance tonight. I think we're very, very close. So anyone from the EDC watching, please note that this is, this is good, but I think that this could, yeah, it's gonna help.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we're looking for, you know, just some wording around the cap and, and maybe a bullet or two in item three, types of businesses targeted by this, really. So.
Okay. Great addition, Sean. Anything else from the board on this item? Do we technically need to table this, or could we just move on without voting? Okay. So that takes us through Selectment Action, appointments and resignations. Is there a motion effective December 14th, 2020, to appoint Rick Brush to the Spirit Council as a regular member with the term expiring December 6th, 2021?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to accept the resignations of Peter Adamowitz as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission, Julie Carmelik as a regular member of the Historic District Commission, and Marguerite Carnell as a regular member of the Historic District Commission, retroactive to December 4th, 2020?
So moved. Okay.
Second with our thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Lorraine Duneen as an alternate member of the Aging and Disability Commission, retroactive to September 1st, 2020?
I'll move that.
I'll second, oh.
Sorry, Jackie.
All in favor with our thanks?
Thank you.
Thank you. Aye.
Many thanks.
The...
Eric, I just have a quick, a quick question. Do we have, or does Historic District, District now have the ability to meet?
My understanding is they do. Maria, can you elaborate on that?
Sure, absolutely. So we're really fortunate in that, that particular commission is structured with a number of alternate members. It is a little different under our ordinance and that, similar to your board, actually, a quorum, a four is needed in order to take action. Four is considered a quorum. We do have enough members at the moment in the event that they do need to, you know, hear an application, take action on an item. But of course, we would love to see, you know, those slots filled as, as soon as possible, just because they do have a regulatory function.
And we are meeting the, the residents you were pardoning of that board as well still? Is there some that have to live in the district itself, right?
Right, exactly. So our ordinance is actually a bit more restrictive than statute on the number of residents living within the district. But I'll confirm with Mike, but I, I think we're okay on that, but I will double check with him.
No need to, I just, yeah, I know, because we've had challenges on, on, for both parties, and I feel it's a filling roles there in the past, because you gotta make sure that it's the right party and it's the right address, basically. So important work, those folks do. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
That is one of the harder boards to fill for all of the reasons that we've been talking about.
Yep.
Review of minutes. So from our regular meeting on November 23rd, the meeting minutes look good, or any changes?
I have one change. Under the Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports, it's after the Board of Ed comment, but I just said, it says that I attended the last Aging and Disabilities meeting where the 10 people attended on affordable housing. It was the Planning Commission meeting.
So you attended the Planning Commission, not Aging?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is a simple change. Anything else?
You have an eagle eye, Wendy, that's impressive.
Great catch. Uh, any, speaking of Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports, are there any tonight?
I just have a, a quick one to close the loop on the, which talked about already this evening, public safety meeting and that subsequent Board of Select meeting, where I believe we were all forwarded a memo from the chief, closing the loop on the, the COVID party incident, where the chief, within his authority, investigated further the matter, and, and I appreciate his follow-up, not, not from a, a, looking for criminal charges or otherwise, but taking, you know, as we all discussed, both in public safety and this meeting, taking the, the issue of gatherings seriously. And I also appreciate that the homeowner was, was very positive in working with the chief and understood, you know, the gravity of the situation. So I think all in all, a good ending to a frustrating situation, but a good lesson for all of us. So.
Eric, just real quickly, just some highlights, Culture Park and Rec, certainly, nothing that I, just for bringing closure to the golf season this year, Yeoman's job of the team up there at the Farms, I think, record year for rounds, as many people can, can imagine, which is really exciting for the course, certainly, certainly exciting for the community that supports it. Certainly, on the Converse side, there's swimming and program, summer programming, revenues down, but we've all, we've all understand that. But the golf course also had the retirement of its longtime and well-respected superintendent, which was celebrated. And then a, in, in short, in short order, a very capable candidate found to carry the golf course superintendent duties forward into the future. The team up there is very excited. So that's all, all well and good. And then the last thing, the, another exciting event or development is that they are fielded, a fairly successful RFP for a new operator for the restaurant up at the Farms, which is really interesting and exciting. So again, to the, to the committee who, who has spent an inordinate amount of time supporting all the Culture Park and Rec services, thank you for your, your efforts and stuff.
Thanks for that recognition, Chris. Anybody else? So this is likely the last time we're gonna get together in 2020, barring a special meeting. So I wish everyone a, a good holiday and a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you. Same to you and everyone.
Before you leave, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
My best.
Aye.
See you.
All right, bye.
Be safe, folks.